Cameron Davis, Senior Advisor to the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency Administrator. Michael Goffin, Regional Director, General for Environment, Canada's Ontario Region. Lana Pollak, Chair of the International Joint Commission's U.S. Section. Pierre Trapegnier, Canadian Commissioner, International Joint Commission. I'd like Marcia to say a few words about our session today.
Good afternoon. My name is Marcia Valianti and I'm from the other side of the Detroit River. Same ecosystem, but there's a border in between. From the University of Windsor. And the procedure that we're going to follow this afternoon is that we're going to have the speakers, if you're called on to speak, you should go to one of these two microphones. And what we'll do is we'll read them, we'll tell you in groups of three so that you know that you're coming up next. And if you, the order that we're going in are people who have already signed up to speak. If you would still like to speak, what you should do is raise your hand and someone will come and bring you a card and you can write your name on it so that you get into the queue to speak to the, to our panel. We have a lot of people who've signed up so far, so what we've done is to limit the time that you have available. Everyone will have three minutes. And we have a system where you're going to be shown a yellow card at 30 seconds left and then you'll get a red card at three minutes and then someone will jump on top of you and throw you out the door. So please try and, and it's amazing what you can get said in three minutes. We'd appreciate it if you kept to three minutes. If there are questions or comments that you'd like to hear from the panelists, then we'll give that an opportunity and that doesn't count against you in your three-minute time. And you also have an opportunity to present comments in writing if you want to. We're also taking comments through Twitter, so that will go into the queue as well. When you get up to speak, we'd appreciate it if you would state your name and if you're representing an organization, what your organization is. And the session is being recorded, so it would be helpful if you spoke directly into the microphone. There's going to be a transcript available at some point which will be posted on the IJC website. This is probably the most important session of the entire day because this is the accountability session where you're going to be able to give your comments to both the governments and to the commissions. So we'd really like to encourage you to give us your feedback. So let's get started. The first three speakers in order will be James Olson from Flow for Water, Emma Louie, and Daryl Gerber from Clean Water Action in Minneapolis. So if you could just kind of start.
I want to thank the International Joint Commission, particularly the chairs, and for those of you here today, U.S. Co-Chair Lana Pollak and Commissioner Trey Panier, I don't know if I pronounced that correctly, and Mr. Goffin and Mr. Davis. Thank you. For the time allotted, I want to state that my name is Jim Olson. I am Chair of an organization called Flow for Water dedicated to educating and enacting principles of commons and public trust for waters of the Great Lakes Basin. We feel that this goal ties directly with your challenge at this time in history of renegotiating this important agreement and re-envisioning what you do is, in your responsible positions as members of the IJC and leaders of the government. And it's our belief that taking the lead of the statements by Frank Edouard Guichet and also by EPA Administrator Lisa Jackson earlier today, that indeed there is a call for a new standard of care. And we believe that this new standard of care, as we've expressed in our letter, comments to EPA, which we incorporate and ask you to look at, and as we've incorporated in our requests to meet with the IJC to discuss this, we believe that the principle of commons and public trust can create a beacon of both guidance and impose accountability of responsibility and duty for all involved with what it is that we are protecting here in the Great Lakes Basin, these boundary waters. We believe this is firmly anchored in not only the law of our two countries, but firmly anchored in the Boundary Water Treaties, Articles Three and Four and Eight and Nine. And we believe that by following these principles, you can build upon, I'm not saying in derogation, build upon the vision that was created with the 1972 Water Quality Agreement and now re-envisioning and adding this umbrella and this beacon of responsibility by which the massive threats, as described by you, Co-Chair Pollak, just in this earlier session, compounded in so many ways, this can be the way by which we can evaluate and respond and expect governments to respond and companies and individuals and communities to respond as these massive threats which transcend the boundaries of our 20th century problems and 20th century legal framework. It is time to act now, just as you've got on your program, H2O now. Let me just end by stating a few words by former Governor William Millican, one of our elders here in the Great Lakes Basin, and I'm authorized to share this. Here's what he said about three weeks ago, Michigan's and Great Lakes water legacy. "The source of my apprehension is the ever-growing global demand for fresh water. The source of my hope is that for centuries our rivers and lakes have been considered a commons belonging to us all, available for use so long as the use does not impair the use of others, and held as a public trust to protect both private and public uses and the ecosystem. Although Michigan should enjoy its wealth, it's important that the word 'wealth' not be defined literally." And I think we can speak of the Great Lakes. "The Great Lakes are not a commodity," in the words of Frank Edouard Guichet earlier, "like oil, but a natural resource, a public trust resource." Saying something else at the end, he said, "The Native Americans and European explorers and those following can hold the streams and rivers of the Great Lakes as all. In their different ways, these communities and ours can view it as something sacred. If we observe this principle in public policy and private actions, there will be no limit to the prosperity, that's both economic and quality of life. Water will then continue to define us, enrich us in ways that reach beyond dollars and beyond our legacy for generations and generations to come. It's no wonder that the Supreme Court of Michigan once declared these Great Lakes are held in a 'high solemn and perpetual trust,'" William G. Millican. And thank you."
Thank you, Jim. I don't know that we're going to respond to everything, but I will say, Jim, thank you very much. I know you've been a very strong advocate for the public trust for decades and I think it shows through and the public trust doctrine is a very important doctrine in the fabric of how we protect and restore our Great Lakes. So thank you for those comments.
Okay. Hi there. Good afternoon. Thank you very much for holding this town hall for everybody. My name is Emma Louie and I'm the Water Campaigner for the Council of Canadians. We're Canada's largest advocacy organization and we have tens of thousands of members and over 70 chapters across the country. I'm here on behalf of Maude Barlow, who is the National Chairperson for the Council of Canadians, and she regrets that she was unable to make it today, but we do appreciate this opportunity to express our thoughts. And as my colleague, Mr. Olson, mentioned, we had sent a request, requesting an opportunity to make a presentation to the International Joint Commission at a later date on the importance of using public trust and commons principles as a framework for governance of the Great Lakes ecosystem. I have copies of Maude Barlow's report, which is our Great Lakes Commons, A People's Plan to Protect the Great Lakes Forever. I believe they're being circulated amongst commissioners. But I'll just give a brief summary of the report. The report calls for the declaration of the Great Lakes to be a living commons, public trust, and protected bio-region. And the notion of the commons is a very old one and asserts that no one owns water, but rather it's a common heritage that belongs to the earth, other species, and current and future generations. The report outlines a governance framework for the Great Lakes that includes 10 principles, such as private interests are subordinate to public rights, the waters of the Great Lakes are human right, and this principle is in line with the UN resolutions that were recently passed recognizing water and sanitation as a human right. Another principle is that public participation is key to the Great Lakes Commons and decisions about the Great Lakes should be made with the involvement of First Nations and Native American tribes. Some of these principles are already reflected in the work of the IJC, such as public participation and attempts to consult with First Nations. The IJC has done an excellent job in researching and making recommendations on some new and emerging threats, such as chemicals of emerging concern and spills of hazardous materials in the Great Lakes. However, implementing commons and public trust principles would address the underlying causes of the threats to the Great Lakes, which are who makes the decisions, the power dynamics of the decision-making, and the values that underline the decisions that are made. There are also issues that need the IJC's immediate and vigilant attention. For example, as you know, Bruce Power plans to ship nuclear waste through the Great Lakes to Sweden and the Council of Canadians recently collected 100,000 signatures from people around the world calling for the shipment to be stopped because of the threat that it poses to the Great Lakes. And in a Natural Resources Committee, Michael Bindley, President of the Canadian Nuclear Safety Commission, had noted that this shipment had never been done before. So because of the precedent-setting nature of this shipment, we're asking that the IJC take a stronger role and stance in this issue. And there's also other issues that have not been addressed, for example, hydraulic fracturing that needs to be incorporated into the governance structure of the, of how we govern the Great Lakes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just will respond by saying thank you very much for the report and we look forward to further discussions unless...
Well, thank you. My name is Daryl Gerber and I'm a program coordinator with Clean Water Action and we work in the state of Minnesota, particularly where I am, and we're happy to be here and thank you for the time. And I have some comments coming from the headwater state to the Great Lakes that we're actually here talking about this week. And one of the things I'd like to start off with is actually, we held a little event recently and we actually collected almost 100 or so postcards thanking the EPA and going to, I'll read it off here, it says, "Dear Administrator Jackson, thank you for protecting our water. We support the EPA's historically strong stances to ensure lakes, rivers, and streams are protected and restored. When you stand strong, you do not stand alone." And then each one of them has a section of comments from each of the people. And so I may leave this with Mr. Davis to give to his boss when he sees her next.
I think that's the kind of fan mail she actually likes, so thank you, Daryl.
Well, you'll like the picture of her on there, too. Some of the things that we are running into in Minnesota in particular is a number of the issues that are affecting the whole Great Lakes, but I'd like to touch on a few of them. One of them, I think, has been really a big topic in these meetings before in the past and has kind of tailed off some, is the issue of ballast water. As you know, Duluth, the Port of Duluth receives the largest amount of ballast water discharge of the, you know, the entire Great Lakes. And while Minnesota and a number of states have issued their own state standards to really protect their waters, the progress on actually getting technology installed on ships and that really go beyond just those policy steps to actually real action is troubling. And you want to really renew the call for a coordinated federal, strong ballast water discharge standards. And I would also like to say that unlike other members of our congressional delegation and those around the Great Lakes, we and a number of other NGOs and folks in Minnesota do support the New York standards and would like to keep those strong. The other things, too, is that while there's been a lot of progress and Minnesota generally is thought to be really, have really good, strong protections, we really do need the EPA and the regulatory agencies to really be a good backstop. We've seen the legislature try to really cut down some of the water quality standards and really take some arbitrary, set some water quality standards, and we really need the EPA to be strong and there to support us and make sure that we have good, clean water for this generation and future generations. Thank you.
Oh, we have to collect the postcards. Just to say, while Cam's collecting his postcards, that support your concern over aquatic invasive species. But I think, you know, one of the things that we have to be aware of is the multitude of pathways through which invasive species can enter the Great Lakes and to take a risk-based approach. And I think we have to also recognize that in terms of ballast water, we have seen a marked improvement, marked decrease in the species that are entering the Great Lakes over the past five or six years through that pathway. And at the same time, we've seen concern over other pathways that we weren't previously paying attention to. So I think what we need is a comprehensive approach to invasive species.
And, Daryl, thanks for the comments. Let me say this, especially on ballast. I want to make two points. One is just a very practical one and then the second one is just looking to the future. The practical one is that after a long time, and I agree, progress has been slow, the U.S. EPA is getting ready to publish a draft vessel general permit for public comment in December. And be ready for that. Everybody in this room should be ready for that. They should be ready to comment, they should be ready to weigh in with your viewpoints on that vessel general permit. It is one of the most important tools that we have for dealing with this vector when it comes to invasive species. The other point I'm going to make goes beyond ballast water, but using it as an example. I think one of the things that stuck with me the most when I read Dave Dempsey's book On the Brink years ago was that we knew that zebra mussels were on the way. We predicted that that was a very real possibility, that they could enter the ecosystem. And so what I'm imploring you to do is to think and speak up 10, 25, 50, 100 years and even further down the line because we cannot be preventative enough. You know, we have learned a lot of hard lessons in this region and unfortunately, in some instances, we keep learning those same lessons over and over again. But when it comes to prevention, you know, our time is now. We need to be pivoting and starting to look without ignoring the remedial work that we need to do. We need to pivot and start to get more prevention focused. And that story, that anecdote that Dave Dempsey provided in his book, I think is real illustrative of how we need to do a better job on that front. So please, please help with that and do get ready for that vessel general permit to come out. Please do comment on it.
Thank you. I'd like to call the next three commenters and I'm going to call three that pre-registered, if you will, over the internet, and then we're going to start peppering in some of the requests that have been coming in tonight. So you will be called. The next three, though, that I'd like to make sure you get in line and you do speak clearly into one of the microphones on either side, Michael Keegan, Dendra Best, and John Jackson. I see a couple getting up. And again, please state your name and your affiliation. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Michael Keegan. I'm with the Coalition for Nuclear Free Great Lakes. I also co-chair a task force for Great Lakes United, Green Energy Nuclear Free Task Force. It's a pleasure to be here. I thank the EPA for hosting and it's good to see the IJC again. I've been presenting to the International Joint Commission since 1987 on issues pertaining to nuclear power in the Great Lakes Basin. 20% of the world's surface fresh water, circled and surrounded and being strangled by nuclear power. 37 nuclear plants directly in the basin, another 23 are just outside of the basin in the windshed, airshed. An accident would carry the fallout over the water, over the Great Lakes. We came together, the Coalition Nuclear Free came together in the wake of Chernobyl and were focusing on prevention. We looked up and down the lakes and we started to see it wasn't just the Fermi Nuclear Power Plant in my backyard, there was the Davis-Bessie, there was the Perry, there was Nine Mile Point, all around the lakes, they were ringed with nuclear power and being strangled, chronically being polluted by nuclear power below permissible levels and always at an acute risk of a Fukushima-type accident. If there were to be a Fukushima-type accident, it could not wash out to the sea. It would be in the basin. We would be losing 20% of the world's surface fresh water, a risk that is unimaginable, a threat, and I say we do not jeopardize for that. There are proposed new nuclear power plants in the Great Lakes Basin. There's a proposed plant at the Darlington up in Ontario. There's a proposed plant at the Fermi III, a proposed plant in New York, Nine Mile Point, Nanitok on Lake Ontario. This is unacceptable. They do not know what to do with the waste that they have currently generated. It is being stored in canisters called dry casks in what they call an ISFC, Isolated Storage Unit. These are vulnerable earthquakes, liquefaction of the pads whereby these casks could actually fall into the lakes. This is not acceptable. Elsewhere, we see proposals for deep geologic repositories up on Bruce Peninsula, the Bruce Power Ontario Generation, looking essentially creating a Yucca Mountain-type situation one mile away from the shore of Lake Huron. For what? I have 30 seconds. I have several resolutions from Great Lakes United. We are very concerned about the steam generators being shipped, a proposal to ship poison, radioactive material on the Great Lakes Basin. I have letters from 125 mayors from Quebec. I have a letter from Quebec Nature, the largest environmental group, several resolutions. What I'm asking the IJC for is that they reinstitute the 1995 Nuclear Task Force and that they re-initiate the inventory on radionuclides and we need a prospectus going forward. The IJC knows many things, but they need to make recommendations. That report from 1997 has laid idle. So we look forward to having meetings, future meetings with the IJC, and I am requesting meetings with the IJC, and I would like to provide you a packet. And thank you very much for your time.
I have one question, just for clarification, please. You want reinstitute the Nuclear Task Force, I got that one, and then you said reinstitute something else and I just missed it.
There was a 1997 inventory of radionuclides in the basin that was done by the International Joint Commission, but nothing's become of the report.
So you're saying...
The respective governments ignored it and so we need to update that because the threat is, has exacerbated and has become more and more acute now in this era of nuclear waste and the shores are ringed with it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you for the privilege of being able to sit and speak today. I just had knee surgery, so standing is a little hard for me, but thank you. My name is Dendra Best. I'm the Executive Director for a regional nonprofit that is dedicated to the education field of wastewater. We work in northwest Michigan, but we have affiliations nationwide and actually we just expanded into international service, too. We represent the integrated clean water technology fields and I really appreciate the opportunity to speak because our emphasis is on the interconnectivity. We've heard so much this afternoon of all the different aspects that are coming into play as far as it relates to Great Lakes ecology, ecosystem, sustainability. One thing that should be really obvious to everyone in this room is that this year we've seen an unprecedented number of extreme catastrophic weather-related events and communities are now facing an additional economic and a public health crisis because their water and wastewater systems have been inundated, damaged, or completely destroyed. In a single Lake Michigan community on the coast, over 7.3 million gallons of diluted raw sewage has been discharged in 15 separate events during 2011. That's 15 separate events. Isn't it time, if ever there was a time, to rethink about how we plumb our communities, how we sewer all of our communities, not just the cities, but the small communities, too? We believe that 2011 really has been the canary for the Great Lakes coal mine. Our purpose is to ask for everyone's support in this room, all the environmental groups, the agencies, the IJC. We need to give full weight to promoting and financing advanced, affordable, clean-water technologies for all our communities. If we're serious about protecting the Great Lakes watershed, and I see Great Lakes United are up after me, so many of these points might be, I'll save him a couple of minutes, too. We must promote and finance options that are sustainable and economically viable for all small communities, not just our cities. And we must recognize the reality that for many Great Lakes states, the majority of homes and businesses in our rural and small communities will now and will always rely on small individual systems or on small community systems. So I ask you, what would you rather manage, a system that discharges 300 gallons a day to the surf, to the soil, or 7.3 million gallons that goes right into surface water? Because clean water for the Great Lakes starts upstream in our watersheds and our groundwater. What we're asking you to do, let me just move up here, we can't keep on putting Band-Aids on 19th-century technology. There are advanced technologies available, they're affordable, they are less costly to operate, they're more easily maintained, they take less energy to operate. EPA itself has recognized this in the Decentralized Memorandum of Understanding. We work with an organization called the Water Environment Research Foundation. We work with the NESC, National Environmental Sciences Center, University of Minnesota, the National On-Site Wastewater Association, and we're dedicated to recycling the water that's in the Great Lakes Basin back into the Great Lakes Basin, into our watersheds and aquifers. And the technology exists that's affordable to allow us to do that. We'd like to be sure that as we look at wastewater, that we don't actually look at it in those terms. We seem to silo our water into this is waste, this is drinking, this is ground, it's all the same water. It all comes from the Great Lakes, it all goes back to the Great Lakes. So we're asking for two actions. One is all the environmental groups to be aware of all the materials that have already been paid for by EPA, by USGS, the small community planning and assessment tools. And we're asking that those be recommended to all the agencies that provide financing for infrastructure. How long do those small communities have to wait until the large 20% cost share comes back? How many here have ever had an 80% grant anymore for an infrastructure project? They just don't exist. So a community that's being told you've got to live with this for the next 20 years until the money is available, that's not acceptable when the option is there for them to take care of their waters for a fraction of the cost. That's who we represent, is all the clean water, advanced technology industries that have solutions. Spent a lot of time today talking about problems. Solutions and options are there if only people are aware of them. Thank you. Thank you.
Maybe I could just, you know, your earlier comments about rethinking how we plumb our cities, I think one of the changes we've been discussing in relation to the Water Quality Agreement is the important role that the IJC and its principal boards, the Water Quality Board and the Science Advisory Board, can play in being forward-looking and advising on not just emerging issues, but on innovative solutions, and to really bring forward some of those ideas that are sometimes difficult for governments to move forward with. So that's how we're trying to create the opportunity for that innovative thinking to surface and be considered.
And I will add, first of all, thank you for the comments. I'll add, too, that one of the things that we're trying to do is incentivize the use of sustainable or green infrastructure as a technology, something that can, you know, we all are hearing and talking about locally-produced food. Well, there's such a thing as locally-produced water, too. We want to make sure that we're doing our very best to make sure that nature's doing its job to purify water so that it can go back into the environment the way it should, reduce costs at the same time, you know, and start to achieve some of those environmental results. And that's something that's happening under the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative. There are some very important projects that are being invested in right now. For example, SEMCOG here in southeast Michigan with its Green Streets program is one example. We've used ERA, the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, the stimulus money to help get at green infrastructures well and to make those kinds of investments. We're seeing more and more of it, but we need to do much more and much better on that front, which will help.
And I'll just say that this is a second session in a row where we've been challenged to think differently, to get out of the box and just think differently. We've got 7 billion people on the planet, and we're moving upward. What is sustainable? So thank you very much. We need to move on, but...
One shout-out I would like to give. The city of Milwaukee routinely gets slammed. They have so many problems with surface runoff. They've put every decentralized tool in the box into limiting the amount of stormwater that goes into their sewer outflow, and I don't think we give them nearly enough credit for the amount of innovative green infrastructure that they've included there. And if there's going to be another ERA, can we make sure more of it goes into green technology? Because very little of it did this time.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
We've got, John Jackson is up, please.
John Jackson with Great Lakes United. And I'm going to talk more specifically about the Great Lakes Water Quality Agreement and some of the processes, because you've been hearing and will continue to hear, I'm sure, from groups that we work with about the much more detailed threats that we're confronting in this basin. It's clear from the information that we've been getting from the scientists is that the vitality and resilience of the Great Lakes and the St. Lawrence River system is really under threat and continues to be under threat. And despite whatever progress we've made, those threats, including some new threats, but even the old threats we haven't adequately dealt with, are there, and therefore, we must continue to put our really serious and ever-more-serious effort into solving these problems. Since 1972, the U.S. and Canada have established shared goals and strategies to protect the Great Lakes through that formal agreement, the Great Lakes Water Quality Agreement. Central to its principles is working together bi-nationally. It is an ecosystem. Therefore, we can only solve the problems if we ignore the political jurisdictions and work together to take care of those. Also, the principle that we have to be on the leading edge in terms of the sort of solutions that we have to use to find these things, and we've been talking about it in terms of a couple of examples that you've just heard. It isn't enough to just simply say, we're going to continue just to bit by bit improve the way we're doing it. We need to leap forward in terms of the type of actions that we take. The Water Quality Agreement has been a catalyst for improvement in the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence River, and not just for here, but also elsewhere. When we look at some international agreements, and you could see that the Water Quality Agreement affected those. But unfortunately, recently, it's become less of a catalyst, and we well know in that new issues that we haven't dealt with, and that it just hasn't been something that governments have seemed as bought into and as committed to as they had in the past. Therefore, we agree with the governments and encourage the governments to develop a new agreement, but it's critical that this agreement be visionary and bold, that it push us beyond the old ways of doing things and stimulate action on some of the issues that we really hadn't been dealing with before, such as climate disruption, invasive species, and more. We urge the governments to make sure in a new Water Quality Agreement that they emphasize strong citizen roles. These are the people who experience and see what's going on, and they have real solutions to bring as well. We need deadlines and targets in the agreement, and we need commitments to action, which are not just studies, but information exchange, but real on-the-ground action. And we want to be able to celebrate when the new agreement comes out, but to do that, we will have to have, at the same time as the signing happens, a strong, clear financial commitment from both governments in terms of what money they are putting on the table in order to solve these problems. And finally, I just want to speak directly to the IJC in terms of the roles that we see for the IJC. The first, evaluating and providing advice to the governments and the public on the condition of the ecosystem, and we were thrilled to hear the commissioners say that's where they're going. The second, evaluating and providing advice to the governments and the public on the adequacy of government programs to address these problems in the ecosystem and to avoid the creation of new threats. And we were again pleased to see the commitment from the commissioners to do that. The third one, however, which we didn't hear, and it doesn't mean you don't tend to do it, the third one is to recommend to the governments and the public innovative, long-term solutions for the protection and restoration of the Great Lakes system that are really taking us a leap forward in terms of solving the problems. So thank you.
Thank you.
I told Anna that I was waiting for the first French question or comment, and it's not coming. I just want to thank you for your comments. What you're saying is actually in line with our International Watershed Initiative program, where we feel and we have the strong belief that the best solution are usually coming from the people in the watershed, which are living with the situation and can best consult and advise us. So thank you very much for your comments.
Speaking of the French issue, I won't be speaking in French, unfortunately, is that one of the real disappointments and frustrations we have with current, and I fear it's going to be the same in the next agreement, is that the St. Lawrence River is cut off at an artificial spot, and that we really need, and we're pleased to see the IJC recommend, that the Water Quality Agreement be extended out to the ocean. I hope we can do that, but I'm not confident.
Well, you can't ignore a St. Lawrence because the water ends up in the St. Lawrence, so...
One thing that I will say, John, thank you for the thoughts and for the comments. You know, in 2007, I think it was, the public interest community did something that was very helpful. It got together and in one place developed recommendations for what the next generation of the agreement should look like. And that, at least in my head, has been one of the things that I've turned to, you know, negotiating an agreement is very complicated, there are a lot of stakeholders, but that actually made the job so much easier in so many ways, because we were able to say, okay, this is what at least one sector, you know, one group of interests out there is saying they want to see in that next agreement. And, you know, one of the things that I'm really excited about is if you go back to that 2000 report, and GLU was very heavily involved, is we heard climate needs to be in the next generation of the agreement, check. Invasive species needs to be covered in the next generation of the agreement, check. And you go down that list, and you see that because of that 2007 report, which pulled so many people and voices together, you know, we were able to be, we were able to go back and kind of use that as a cross-reference to understand what we thought needed to be addressed based on some of the many things that we've heard from you. So that's been, in some ways, a litmus test, and I think that exercise was very helpful, and I think the governments have listened, especially when it came to that 2007 report.
All right, our next three speakers will be Lila Cabell from the People's Water Board in Detroit, then Gilda Torri from Ducks Unlimited, and Michael Murray from the National Wildlife Federation, and I'm over.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the commissioners for being here, and I'd like to welcome everybody to my town, Detroit. I'm a very proud Detroiter, and I appreciate this opportunity to stand before you. As just an everyday citizen, I will not have anything technical to say, I'm just going to be speaking from my heart. I represent the People's Water Board, which is a coalition of nine organizations that came together to shadow our water board because of what was happening to our water that didn't represent looking at water as life and water as a human right. And I just want to bring to the conversation and the deliberations around Great Lakes water quality, the concern for making sure that water and water quality touches the lives of all people, little people, big people, and those who are struggling with maintaining the quality of life, and who are not in this room because they are trying to live out their daily experience and cannot be a part of this kind of delegation. It would be wonderful if we had broad representation of the people who benefit from the waters of the Great Lakes, because the Great Lakes water is our water. And so it goes in Detroit, so it goes throughout the Great Lakes. And our connectedness has been broken in terms of our human relations, and that also affects our relationship with the water. So we need to really be in touch with that. I had the experience of being with Rosa Parks for 42 years, and so many of my perspectives are around what we can do together and how we can do it in a humble and human way. And one of the things that is impacted in terms of the quality issue is affordability. And we have many, as this year alone, 5,600 households had water shut-offs. And the state policy with the water shut-off, if there's children in a home, families are threatened to have their children taken away from them because of the home being condemned without water. That is, that's a serious issue in terms of looking at affordability. So as we look at quality, you know, it's really looking at how we can maintain affordability for all and not just for some. And also in terms of just the amount of energy that people put into sustaining life, many times there is the threat to life in terms of what's happening with water. For instance, there has been the practice, and it's really been good, to have fishing advisories posted, but for some people, that advisory is ignored because they want to fish and they want to have the fish as food, and so that they fish anyway. So we got to attack the quality issue so that the water is not polluted and so that it is available and it has the quality that it should have so that people can sustain life and that it's not life-threatening. So the people awareness is something that I really hope that we can do a better job of making sure that people on the ground know about the issues of quality and that they're able to integrate that into what's going on in their lives. And so just as an everyday person, I would like to have that be in your background music or noise, and that healing our relationships is an important part of making that happen. And I really appreciate being able to speak to you, and I hope that you take that to heart and that you would consider that water is life, water is a human right, and that the quality of water affects the quality of life.
Well, I only disagree with one thing you said, Lila Cabell, that you're just an ordinary person, because I happen to know otherwise of some of your work. And I would like to repeat just one thing that you said, because it was so shocking to me the first time I heard it some few years ago, because I'm not in touch with the same people who are suffering in the ways you said. When water is shut off because the water bill isn't paid, then the children are removed from the home and the whole, I mean, you know, think about that. That's something that our societies shouldn't, that's in the city, yeah? And I bet it's in other cities, too. It's the state of Michigan. Well, kids need to be in households with water, but why isn't the water there, is the question. So big societal issues. Thank you very much for bringing forth that perspective. I don't think we will forget it.